...diverse and historic districts. The hunt takes place on Saturday, October 18th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. with check-in at 9:30 a.m. at Chungking Plaza located at 949 North Hill Street. Once on the hunt, you and your team will search for clues throughout this lively neighborhood, discover ancient traditions, and stumble upon picturesque alleyways and bustling shops. The event is organized by City Race, which plans three-hour hunts through Southern California's many diverse neighborhoods. For cost and other details, go to racel.com. Trick-or-treating, jack-o'-lantern carving demonstrations, magicians, and much more. That's what's on tap at the annual Boo at the Zoo event taking place at the L.A. Zoo on two consecutive weekends: on Saturday and Sunday, October 18th and 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and again the following weekend. The two spooky and safe weekends also include the opportunity to see special feedings for gorillas, elephants, orangutans, and other zoo residents as they enjoy pumpkins filled with treats to eat and play with. All activities are free with paid zoo admission. The L.A. Zoo is located at Griffith Park at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to lazo.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. And it's become a staple of city life here in Los Angeles, the occasional shutting down of big bustling streets for the car-free festival, CICLOvia. Rasha Goel has more.
From a route marked from Echo Park to downtown Los Angeles to Boyle Heights, Angelinos had the chance to head to the east side for the first time at this October's CICLOvia event. Even city leaders took some time out of their busy schedule to enjoy the city.
This is the 10th time that we've closed down a space four times longer than Central Park to just experience the lifeblood of the city.
You see things when you're on a bike that you just don't see otherwise, the nuances. You see more of the businesses, you see more of the neighborhoods, more of the details of each neighborhood, and it's a really special experience.
Attendees could enjoy the experience by cycling, walking, rollerblading, or just about anything that didn't involve driving a car.
Ten years from now, when we still have CICLOvia, we're going to look back at CICLOvia and say, "CICLOvia was the main impetus for all of us to continue to get to know one another through bicycles and other forms of transportation."
CICLOvia has become a celebration of both public spaces and public gatherings in Los Angeles and has received a great response.
I think we should do it as often as possible. Once a month would be great.
We see all these type of people and all these families, and it's pretty amazing.
And if you happen to miss this one, don't worry, CICLOvia will be back in December and will have a new route running through South Los Angeles. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The term "CICLOvia," with an "O," originated in Colombia, where on each Sunday and public holidays, main streets in certain cities are blocked off to cars for runners, skaters, and cyclists. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook or find us on Twitter at LATW35. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Ever notice how we no longer focus our attention on one thing at a time? We don't just walk or even just drive. We focus on so many different objects, we don't notice the dangers ahead of us. We're a distracted society. We're blind to the importance of being safe, to the things that really matter, blind to the things that could actually save our life. We're blind to everything surrounding us. Be aware, move with care, watch the road.
This is Koreatown. My name is Huang Be Kim. You watch L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Sargent, please call the members in hand.
Items 1 through 13 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1A and C may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order.
Items 1 through 13 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1A and C may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order. Continue.
We have cards, Mr. President, on items 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, and 8.
Let's hold those items and...
And 13.
And then let's hold item 12. I expect an amending, an amendment to be circulated on that. So let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That moves us on to the next section.
Items 14 through 16 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Didn't we hold 14?
Yes, yes, we held 14.
Or continued 14?
We continued 14, so that leaves 15 and 16.
Okay, specials members, I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote on those two items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next section.
Items 17 through 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on all three items.
Okay, and let's move forward.
Items 20 through 22 are closed session items. Do you wish to hold them on the desk?
Well, let's hold them until Mr. Krikorian arrives.
Mr. President, that will take counsel to presentations or items called special.
Let's take up a few items before we go into our presentation. Let's take up item 2, called "Special" by Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, item 2.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or at @JWalshConfidential and tweeting @HollywoodDems. This is, and for identification purposes only, Chairman on no on every single one of the statewide propositions.
Stay on the item.
It's identification purposes only.
Stay on the item.
Number 2, Bella Street Lighting District. These are protests against a proposed improvement in maintenance. We support any, all protest, any and all protest. As far as the actual lighting is concerned, the lighting is very good, and of course, again, the lighting is always good in white people's neighborhoods and always bad in minority neighborhoods. Come to my neighborhood, it looks like daytime at 2:00 in the morning. Go down to Central Avenue, and it looks like nighttime, it looks like midnight. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Akala, are you here? Mr. Akala passes. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. O'Farrell, I look to you. Are you ready to proceed? So at this point, we will turn the meeting over to Member Mitch O'Farrell for a very important presentation.
Thank you, and I would also like our colleague, Mr. Jose Uizar, to join me today. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I am glad to stand here with Councilmember Uizar, with former City Councilwoman and City Controller Wendy Gruel. Yes? How about a round of applause for Wendy Gruel? Our General Manager of the Department of Disability, Stephen David Simon, and the hundreds of mentees and mentors that we are commemorating today as Disability Mentoring Day in the city of Los Angeles. New generations of young people with disabilities and growing up in Los Angeles, graduating from high school, going to college, and preparing to participate in the workplace. And programs like this emphasize our dedication as a city to this very important community. Both students and job seekers with disabilities have the right to maximize their potential by making the most of their intellect, talents, and abilities in an environment free of physical, programmatic, and attitudinal barriers. Disability Mentoring Day provides an opportunity for students and job seekers with all types of challenges to gain insight into career options by spending part of their day in the workplace, shadowing an employee as he or she goes through a normal day on the job. These efforts are made possible through a broad partnership with the American Association of People with Disabilities, supported by the U.S. Department of Labor's Office of Disability Employment Policy, and a dedicated team of organizers from the City Department on Disability, local colleges, universities, and private sponsors. Enabling employees to serve as volunteer mentors on Disability Mentoring Day provides employers with an opportunity to tap a pool of potential future employees, recruit interns, learn more about the daily experience of persons with disabilities, develop lasting relationships with new friends, and demonstrate positive leadership in their communities. One such leader who has been supporter of disability mentoring and mentoring in general is our friend, Olivia Mitchell. She is Assistant Chief of Grants Administrator for the Housing and Community Investment Department, or H-CID-L.A. Today, we are establishing a new mentor award as part of our Disability Mentoring Day celebration and to help us with this... And to help us with this new award, Mr. Jose Wezar gets the great honor of presenting this award.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mitch.
Mr. Wezar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and good morning, everyone. And it's certainly an honor to have one of our great city employees and mentors for many, many people here in the City of Los Angeles, including my wife, who once worked and was a staff member at the Children for Commission Youth and Families. And once in a while, my wife Rochelle turns to me and mentions a moment when Olivia would turn to her and advise her on what to do and what not to do, or how to move forward, an agenda that improved at that time children's lives and now improves the lives of people with disabilities. And so just to mention a little bit about Olivia's career, and it's quite long, so bear with me. But before I do that, I do want to acknowledge our council member Mitch O'Farrell, who is doing a wonderful job as Chair of Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging, and such a long title, Mr. President. We could add one more category to that if you'd like. He, no worthy cause moves forward without him noticing in his jurisdiction as committee chair. So congratulations to you, Mr. O'Farrell, for your work. And let me go on with Olivia's long and illustrious career and get your coffees out. Since 2005, Ms. Mitchell has been an Assistant Chief Grants Administrator for the City of Los Angeles, starting at the former Community Development Department, and since 2013 at the Housing and Community Investment Department. She has managed community centers and directed research, legislative, and management information units. She is currently the manager of staff operations at H-CID's Family Source System, Domestic Violence Program, Child Passenger Safety Program, and the federally funded Neighborhood Improvement Construction Projects. Ms. Mitchell has also consistently worked with young people throughout her city career, beginning in 1971 with her work with the District Attorney's Youth Advisory Board, through 1993 with Mayor Bradley's Youth Advisory Council. And I believe Mr. Labange, Wendy Grul, and Corretz were members of that as well. And she, she, she worked with that. And in 1995, serving as the first director of the City of Los Angeles Commission for Children, Youth, and Their Families. She has developed and implemented leadership development programs for the best and brightest youth of our city, as well as programs for the less enfranchised, including foster and probationary youth and young people involved with gangs. Olivia has worked at the program level, administrative level, and policy level to engage youth and to increase the involvement of disenfranchised adults in the decisions affecting their lives, especially government decisions. Ms. Mitchell has also had the opportunity to influence public policy and a variety of issues through her various commission and foundation appointments over the years, including current appointments to the Los Angeles County Probation Commission and the California Community Foundation's Bloom and Thelma Pearl Howard Affiliates. That was, they only give us a certain time to talk about people's careers, and we're over that time, okay? Formerly, she was a member of the National Board of the Tavis Smiley Foundation, the YWCA of Greater Los Angeles, the Latino Black Roundtable, KCT, United Way Board of Directors, and the Rosa Parks Sexual Sarc Crisis Center. Although Ms. Mitchell has directly mentored over 2,000 young people through the various youth councils she staffed and operated, in reality, she has positively influenced thousands more through the work of their, of her mentees. She has mentored and served a number of public officials, including many of those that are here today and around this horseshoe and sitting out in the audience. She has served five Los Angeles mayors, and she is a friend to many, including yours truly and my wife. There are some people in life that we are all better for knowing, and Olivia Mitchell is one of those people. And I'm very proud to honor her today, along with the City Council and our mayor, for a lifetime of work and to be one of many that we call a great city employee that has benefited, that has improved the lives of Angelenos and beyond. So Olivia, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we have the very first ever Distinguished Mentor Award that will now be named in your name from here on forward. And knowing, and knowing how you always wanted to save money, Olivia, your departments, we owe you a frame, we haven't framed this. But congratulations, on behalf of all of us, we are very, very fortunate to have you work for the city. And for those of you who we call a mentor, thank you so, so much for your committed time and volunteerism. Thank you, Olivia, we love you.
Mr., Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. O'Farrell.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
And Mr. Wezar, I do have, and howdy, Wendy, I do have a few members that would like to say a few words, so I think it would be appropriate for me to call on other members of the council at this time. Mr. Sadio.
Mr. President, let me take a moment to, to thank you and thank the council for acknowledging truly one of the great Angelenos and a, as Mr. Wezar indicated, one with a rich record of public service. I want to thank her though personally, because she's been a mentor to me. I got to know her when I first came into this building, working for the great Mayor Tom Bradley in 1981, around that time. I see Luis Mata and Betty and others that I worked with during that time period. And it was through her examples and examples of people like Bill Alkins that I began a greater appreciation for, for service, for the public service part of what we do. We remained friends throughout those years, but became better and best friends as she began to play a very critical role in mentoring both my son and his wife, particularly shortly after my wife passed away, and being a great grandma to my granddaughters. They just love her. I cannot tell you how excited they get when they see her. And she's just been a real dear family member. And so I just love her, love you, Olivia, very much, and thank you for all that you've done for my family, and also for the city and the family of the City of Los Angeles. God bless you.
Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I almost don't know what to say. What can you say about someone who's been not only a mentor to me when I first started out and got on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council as a youth? I hate to say it, but it was 1975. So I guess I'm not a youth anymore. You not only have been a great mentor from then on, and a dear friend, and one of my favorite constituents, and also a very, very dear friend to one of my dear friends as well, the late Shirley Roberts. You were like a sister to her, and you and, you and Shirley both were like a sister to me. So I appreciate that. All that you've done, there can't be many people that have mentored more people through City Hall and made more of a difference than you. And some of us that are here, are here because of the great start and the great mentoring and support that you gave us. So I personally thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I know I speak on behalf of hundreds who would say the same thing.
Mr. Price.
Mr. President, I too want to just stand and salute a real she-rod. She has been a mentor for those in the building and outside the building, and a city that is eternally grateful for your commitment, for your love, and for your, your caring hand. And so again, thank you, congratulations, and we
Olivia, I just want to briefly say that I too appreciate everything that you've ever done. When I first members came to this business, I had no knowledge at all in city government, and I was the chief of staff. So we would go occasionally up on, what floor were you on?
22nd.
And, and I would just sit down and listen to the conversations that would take place. And I learned a lot. But the one thing that I, I just want to say that I think has been important to the City of Los Angeles where it relates to Olivia, is that she has always been there. You could always count on that big smile and friendly face, year after year after year, committed to helping others. I mean, she started here when she was like four years old. So she's still 39 and holding like me, but, but congratulations, and it's an honor to just look up and see you with a bouquet of flowers, smiling, looking great. So members, let's give Olivia just another round of applause, because that's the least we can do. Ms. Grul, good to see you and welcome home.
Thank you. And I want to echo all the sentiments that have made today. I'm not sure you all know, but she was surprised that they were creating this award at her honor. And I was surprised to be here, her surprise today to be here, because as many of us said, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Olivia Mitchell. I met her in 1979. I'm a little younger than you, Paul, just to say that. 1979, when I was at Kennedy High School and received the youth award, and then became a member of the youth council. And that is, I always talk about my journey. All of us have journeys to get to a place where we're able to give public service and provide that, and it was because of Olivia Mitchell. And it really is the thousands of kids, and many of whom probably don't even know Olivia's name, but it was those continuation high schools we went to that everyone had given up on. Olivia Mitchell, we would go there and talk to them about getting involved and the importance of staying in school. And so Olivia, my whole family knows that I was able to achieve what I was able to achieve because of you. And when I gave a commencement speech at a school when I was a city council member, I talked about it was the little things that matter in your life that become big things. And Olivia Mitchell, one day, did not have a car, had taken the bus, and needed to go to South LA for a meeting, and needed a ride. I was at UCLA. I said, sure, I didn't really want to study, so I said, sure, I'll take you, Olivia. And my journey began about learning about Los Angeles and about giving back. Olivia, you are an inspiration, not only on, on youth issues, disability issues, poverty issues, but most importantly, you are a family friend to many of us. We call you mom, we call you grandma, whatever it is, although you probably don't want to be called grandma, but mom, to many of us. And so a nice award, and forever will live on. You will, there will be the Olivia Mitchell Award in the City of Los Angeles.
Okay, I'll be short, I'm really totally surprised. And the department knows that I ignored the award for a couple of weeks. The letter arrived, and I said, okay, it's Disability Mentoring Day. I put it over here, and I figure I'll show up that day. And it was really when I got a nasty phone call from Mr. Simon, he said, Olivia, you haven't called, you haven't answered, that I actually read the letter, and they said that they wanted to honor me on October the 15th. So I hadn't done it. So I am, I still didn't know about naming an award for me. Let me say that my years in City Hall have been wonderful. Came in '74, when it came in '74, Bill Alkins put all of these commissions together, and we were all one, disability, aging, and youth. So when a colleague of mine asked me, why would disability want to honor you? I said, okay, so you don't know me. We were all one group for all the time that we were there. You know, Noreen Vincent, Dexter Henderson, Luis Mata, all of us were one. We did disability stuff, we did aging stuff, we did youth stuff, all together. So I know all the rules and all the laws and etc. When the scourge of HIV and AIDS was going rampant as a person dealing with young people, we responded to that. And in 1989, we had the first youth conference in South LA to talk to young people about age prevention in cooperation with Children's Hospital. So we always had young people from the LGBT communities on our youth council. Unfortunately, one of those young people later on, as the disease was become, became apparent, he committed suicide, and I think of him often on AIDS Day. But, so we've been involved, disability, with young people, with all kinds of programs. And I have to introduce my son and daughter, who of course got the short end of that stick. When you, when you're devoting your, your work time, where you have to pay bills as a single parent, sometimes your, your kids don't get all that they should. And so this is my son, Aaron, who is right here. He's the father of my 18-year-old granddaughter. And my daughter is right here taking pictures. Robin, she's right here. And the mother of my 34-year-old granddaughter. So it's very interesting, I still, Paul Corretz talks about 1975. Okay, so my son is 49, he'll be 50 next month, and my daughter is 50, she'll be 51. So I'm young. I'm sorry, she said she's already 51. Okay, I was trying to make her younger. The, I have enjoyed my work in the city, and when people talk to me, aren't you retired? I said, no, because I enjoy the people. Some of my colleagues are here, I enjoy working with younger people, they keep me young, and the young people keep me young. And it's all about heredity, it's not about any treatments or whatever. So yeah, at 71, I'll be 72 in a couple of months. I'm not thinking necessarily about retiring for the city, I enjoy it, I enjoy the people, I think all of you guys are funny when we watch City Council. Wendy says it's not as much fun as it was before, but it's still, you know, good. Something to do when you're bored on Sunday ironing, you watch Channel 35. So we're gonna be here, I have a new staff member that I just promoted, I promised her I would stay until she passed probation, so I'll be here at least until 2016. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, colleagues, I think we can say because of Olivia Mitchell, Youth Springs Eternal here at City Hall. I also just want to mention that Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas was unable to be here this morning because of a schedule glitch, but he is going to celebrate in her glory a little later this afternoon. I would like to applaud our City's Department of Disability. But before we go much further, we are going to invite our wonderful, distinguished, outstanding General Manager on Disability, Stephen David Simon, to say a few words.
I'll, thank you, council members. I'll be brief, I just want to make one point about today. I mean, we've just seen the power of, of great mentoring, because Olivia Mitchell has mentored so many of the leaders who literally run Los Angeles now. Let's be clear, Disability Mentoring Day is not some kind of charity feel-good day. It's about taking extraordinary people with extraordinary skills who are going to lead our economy and our workforce into, into the next decade. That's what this community is about. It's about going the extra mile to make sure they're fully prepared to enter the workplace, support Los Angeles, and, and be an integral part of this city. So we're not, we're not coming up from behind, we plan to lead, and I'm really thankful for all the parts of our community that are here today and represented. So again, thank you, council members, for, for taking your time to mark this very important day.
And in closing, it gives us great pleasure to present this certificate of recognition on this day, Disability Mentoring Day, signed by the entire City Council, the City Clerk, and our mayor. And it's just a great honor to stand here amongst these wonderful people on this lovely day, celebrating such a wonderful, worthwhile endeavor.
Thank you so much, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Wezar. Congratulations again, Olivia, Wendy, a pleasure, a pleasure to see you again. Okay, members, we're gonna, before we go to a presentation... Okay, members, we're gonna, before we go to a presentation from Dr. Jones, we will go to item seventeen. I have two cards on seventeen. If I could get Mr. Akala to come forward. Mr. Akala.
I pass. I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Item seventeen, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, for identification purposes only, Chairman of No on Every Statewide Proposition. This is a very important, this is the appointment of Mr. Enrique Aragon to the Quality and Productivity Commission. We desperately need help there, because the productivity here in City Council isn't very good. However, I want to point out that we did check, and Mr. Enrique Aragon has absolutely no convictions for possession of child porn. As you remember, I got up here and spoke about somebody a couple of years ago, and that person was convicted. One of Garcetti's appointees was convicted for possession of child porn. We want to mention that in order to get this job, he had a hand in an undated letter and signed of resignation. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, quickly, item three, Mr. Akala, item three. Item three, Juan. He passes. Let's vote on this item. Members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Item six, Mr. Akala. Item six. Thank you. Let's vote on this item as well, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, I need to ask at this point for reconsideration on item fifteen. So Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is now before us. Dr. Jones, how would you like to proceed?
Why don't I come and stand here?
Whatever works best for you.
I think so. Thank you very much for having me here today. I know we're behind on schedule, so I'm gonna try and do this as quickly as possible. Asked for an update on seismic hazard in Los Angeles and what we're doing about it. Just to start by reminding you, we have more faults with more people than anywhere else in the United States.
Dr. Jones, if I could stop you for one second, would you please indicate that you prefer to be?
Oh, I'm...
Because everybody's saying, have her sit down. I mean...
It's a lot easier for me to talk standing up, so if you guys don't mind, this is sort of more convenient.
No, it works. It works for us.
I feel awkward when I try to do presentations sitting down, professor mode, you know?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've got lots of earthquakes. We don't need to rehash that, do we? We still can't tell you when, so we have to be prepared overall. I have been working here now with the mayor's staff for the last over nine months, trying to really go beyond what we had already done as scientists about what's the risk here in Los Angeles, to getting that information so your policymakers can decide what you want to do about it. One of the points to be made is that getting ready for Northridge is not enough. I need to repeatedly remind people that was not a big earthquake. The only time in California we've had a big earthquake was in nineteen oh six. That earthquake lowered the gross domestic product of the whole United States by more than one and a half percent. The British insurance payments can be seen in global gold movement. They then penalized American bond measures after that. They wouldn't, they gave them higher interest rates because of the earthquake. These type of really big earthquakes can change the economy of the whole country, and that's what we're really trying to address here in California. I'd also point out that the nineteen oh six earthquake is part of what made Los Angeles Los Angeles. The decade after the nineteen oh six earthquake saw a five-fold increase in the population of Los Angeles. People gave up on San Francisco and moved south. What we are now looking at is what's going to happen when we have our earthquake. Is it going to be reversed? Will people give up on Southern California? We hope not. We're trying to make sure that doesn't happen. But we can't do it by preparing for Northridge. I'm showing you here the distribution of strong shaking for the nineteen oh six earthquake, the Northridge earthquake, and what we expect from a big San Andreas earthquake here in Southern California. The point being, the fault for Northridge was ten miles long. The San Andreas Fault will be two hundred miles long. What's different about a big earthquake is how much larger the area is that receives strong shaking. I think, yeah, here I'm showing you the strong shaking in Northridge on the left and the expected strong shaking for LA, same, basically the same figure on the right. And on the left with the Northridge, we also have the, showing where buildings got tagged, right? Where did we have enough damage from the earthquakes that the building department went out and inspected the buildings? The strong shaking in Northridge is in the Santa Susana Mountains. We did not get it in the city of Los Angeles. Only the very northern part of the valley, like the Chatsworth area, there we had strong shaking. When we had damage in downtown Los Angeles, that shows us that we have weak buildings, not that we had a big earthquake. And compare it with what we expect to be the shaking level in the San Andreas earthquake, and you can see that we should expect the buildings that we had in nineteen ninety-four, we're going to have even more of them damaged when we had this earthquake if we don't do something about it. And the consequences of this can really grow. I'm showing you here the gross domestic product of New Orleans and Nashville. Those are two cities that are only a few hundred miles apart, affected by the same regional economy. And after the hurricane in two thousand and five, the economy of New Orleans took a dive and it has stayed down. They have lost a hundred and five billion dollars in GDP in just seven years, and they continue to lose at fifteen billion a year. This is a city of only a half a million people. Now let's try scaling this up to Los Angeles. If we have the same sort of disruption to our city that Katrina brought to New Orleans, we could be seeing huge losses that go on for decades. And so that's what we're trying to deal with. How do we make an urban society that is resilient to the disaster? And by that we mean a city that still functions after the disaster. There's one thing to say, here's the losses in the event. It's another to how do we recover? How do we keep our population in place? How do we keep our jobs open? To be able to do that, we need to not die in the earthquake. We need to be able to respond effectively to the earthquake, but we also have to be able to recover from the earthquake and recover quickly. And that means that we need to have enough infrastructure left in place that we can keep on going. We go and look at where the damages really happened in our prediction from the shakeout earthquake. What you see is three hundred thousand buildings damaged. Now, this is all of Southern California, not just the city, but it's one in sixteen buildings in Southern California will be significantly damaged. It's also going to be what causes our homelessness and injuries. So we clearly have to deal with our buildings. All right? We also see that we could have months without water pipes, that the damage to the water pipes going into our buildings and the damage to the infrastructure bringing the water into the city faces the possibility of months without water, and then you really have trouble keeping your population in place. Let me ask you, how long are you willing to stay if you haven't had a shower in a month? All right? And it's a significant public health issue. So when we really look at how we're going to, you know, deal with this earthquake, we got to think about what happens after it, not just during it. And what happens to our water system is a really big deal. The other thing is, when we did our modeling the shakeout, we came up with huge losses from business disruption. Partly that's back to the water issue. It's also a communications issue, because how do you run a modern economy without a communication system? So these are the areas that we've really been trying to focus on and understand what can be done. Retrofitting of old, bad buildings has got to be a key issue, all right? When a building performs badly in an earthquake, we change the building code and don't allow it to be built. After we lost a lot of unreinforced masonry or brick buildings in the thirty-three Long Beach earthquake, we changed the law and stopped allowing those to be built. After we collapsed the Olive View Hospital in seventy-one, we changed the law, didn't allow those non-ductile concrete buildings to be built. After we lost the Northridge Meadows apartment in ninety-four, we changed the law. We don't have those built. But none of these have disappeared, and we still have those building out, those buildings out there. On the URM's, the unreinforced masonry building, this is a place where Los Angeles took the leadership in nineteen eighty-one. We passed the first ever law to mandate retrofitting of buildings. And because of that law, nobody died in the Northridge earthquake in a URM. This is how Bernson really personally took the leadership and did this, and it changed the outcome, and it showed that retrofitting can work. We actually have just put together some data, and we see that URM's actually had a lower red tagging rate after the earthquake compared to the overall number of buildings being inspected. The retrofitting law doesn't prevent all damage, but it really worked. We've also, the State Seismic Safety Commission has been watching what happens with retrofitting of URM's around the state. After the Los Angeles law, the state adopted a law that mandated all jurisdictions had to catalog their URM's and develop a retrofitting program. But they did not specify what the retrofitting program would be. Some places, it's voluntary, and in places with voluntary programs, twenty-two percent of those buildings have been eliminated. In places with mandatory programs, they've eliminated eighty-eight percent of those buildings. Mandatory works a lot better than voluntary. All right? To do this, this year, we have convened a mayor's technical task force, and we've been able to bring in leadership of the structural engineering community to help us work with this. We've had the leadership of the Structural Engineers Association of Southern California, Earthquake Engineering Research Institute. FEMA has actually thinks that this is so important. They've put up money to bring in some of the country's leaders on these issues to work with us. And then we've been able to meet with the leadership of the Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety. And we've had many meetings over the last six months to really look at the issues around how the buildings are constructed, what can be done to make them safer. We've also met with stakeholders, because we aren't going to do this alone. I've been meeting with a lot of different building owners and getting their input on what, how they see the problems, where they can be going with that. And they've all been engaged in, in the process with repeated meetings to find an approach to deal with the building issues. We have a lot of buildings that are going to be covered by this. What we are worried about are buildings that are built before nineteen eighty. The changes in the building code in nineteen seventy-six eliminated a lot of our problems, but the buildings that had been permitted before seventy-six, it's up to nineteen eighty before they're really not being built. We have something well over ten thousand, maybe as many as twenty thousand, software story buildings. We're going to be working on that. We know we have fifteen hundred non-ductile concrete after the report that was from the engineers up at the Pacific Earthquake Engineering Research Center. All right? The other issue, that we have a separate issue that we need to look about, and that's the fact that our modern building code is not trying to give us a building you can use after the earthquake. We actually say that this building is a success because it didn't kill anybody. All right? So what we specify in the building code is built to prevent collapse, not to maintain use. And that means we are building in, each new building is building in the potential for greater financial losses. And in fact, one estimate that's been done by an engineer at University of Colorado, it was able to show that for, in previous earthquakes, for every collapsed building, we have ten red-tagged buildings and forty yellow-tagged buildings. Our present building code is trying to get us down to only ninety-nine percent, oh, ninety-nine percent chance that we won't collapse in the, in the big earthquake. That's accepting one percent will collapse, and potentially means fifty percent you can't use. That's a new code compliant building. So we really are trying to address this issue. How can we encourage people to move beyond minimum life safety and stop building in financial losses? We have done a great job of making our citizens safe. Our new buildings are very safe buildings, but they could still cost us a lot of money. All right? We're also looking at the water system. We've identified several significant goals that are need to be there to have a resilient water system. We need to be able to support our firefighters. The fire following earthquake could double our losses easily. We need to figure out how to make our pipes not break. We all saw what happened on Sunset Boulevard. Imagine three hundred of those on the same day. When we have this strong shaking across the city, we have to find some way to develop more seismically resistant pipes. We also need to worry about the water coming into the city. I believe it's up to over eighty-five percent of your water has to come in across the San Andreas Fault to get to us now. Every one of those aqueducts will break in the big earthquake. There are ways to engineer the crossings to protect them through the earthquake. That has not yet been done. It's an area that we've really got to look at. And then, of course, the ultimate resilience to not, to the loss of the water imported across the fault is to not need it in the first place. And anything that we can do to increase our use of local water reduces our vulnerability to the earthquake. So sustainability is earthquake resilience, and the more that we can do this, the better off we're going to be. And this is so fundamental. You can't open a business, you can't stay in your home without water for months. All right? We have to fix the water system to make it worthwhile to fix the buildings. There's no point in fixing the buildings if people can't go to work in them anyway. All right? The other, the last area where we've really been looking at it is how do we recognize where we could have failures of our communication system and find solutions that will help us get past that? So thank you. That was a quick run-through. I want to end by saying tomorrow's shakeout. I hope that all of you are going to be thinking about what you do to be safe in an earthquake and participate in this. I also want to offer that next week, we have another meeting where we're going to be going to the more, there's Buildings at Risk Summit, where we're having all of our engineers coming together and looking at these issues, and you'd all be very welcome there as well. So thank you.
No, Dr., stick around. Thank you. Thank you so very much. We need to have a serious discussion about these types of things, and you definitely gave us a lot of data that we really need to think about. I do want to call on Mr. Englander. I'm sure he has a question or two he may have for you. Mr. Englander?
Yes, thank you very much. And as I affectionately call you, as you know, Dr. Doom and Gloom, but it's the facts. And, you know, you and I have had a great working relationship for many years, and all of your presentations usually leave everybody in shock and awe, which is part of, I think, the benefit of having such the leading expert in, not just the country, in the world, who's dedicated her life to earthquake preparedness and recovery and safety and programs and retrofitting and getting the word out and education and information. You're a breath of fresh air, quite frankly, from my perspective, because you arm us with information and knowledge and tell us what we need to do, and there's so many things, so many great things happening in the space that you're engaged with and your entire team that we're, I'm so proud to work with you. There's a lot of great things that have come up of, not just technology, but first in legislation, one of the things I wanted to recognize first is our former council president, Alex Padilla, and what he's done with early warning systems, which those vital seconds are so important. I understand the governor signed it, but can you give us an update first on where that's at, if you can hold my time for it to answer, and particularly on the funding and what that could do?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I, let's see, so Senator Padilla's bill called for the state to establish an earthquake early warning system, working with the California Integrated Seismic Network, which is the partnership of USGS Caltech Berkeley and the state of California, actually. The Geological Survey is part of this as well. It did not identify funding. It asked, you know, OES to evaluate funding approaches to take. We are building on our existing system, so we can get you... We are building on our existing system so we can get you something out of what we've already got. What the concern is, is making it a public safety level of reliability. It's operated now as a research system. There is this, in the US House, well, in Congress, the USGS budget has had $5 million added by both the House and the Senate to support earthquake early warning. And if that budget ever gets passed, we will be using that to really advance here in all the regions we're working on. Here in Southern California, because of the commitment that the city has made in the UAWC district to buying stations, I don't know if you know that the city's UAWC money was used to, almost $6 million went to Caltech. 125 new stations have been installed in Southern California, and we are the first region of the country to have enough seismic stations to support earthquake early warning because of the city's commitment. Now we've got to figure out the funds to maintain it and operate and develop the software. And we're doing everything we can as we go along. And as I said, if we get the, if the congressional budget is passed as it's written right now, we'll be able to really move towards some levels of operational use as we roll it out.
And I think it's critical to bring that up in every conversation and every breath, because those few seconds, perhaps minutes, can save not just lives and billions of dollars, but critical infrastructures you talked about from water, communications, you know, a lot of the things that we could do to prepare it ahead of time.
Right. When we're looking at the fault crossing issues, knowing that the ruptures coming through can allow the utilities to make adaptations to the system, to, you know, cut off the natural gas so we don't have a fire coming through, that type of thing.
One of the things I really want, and before I get into the next item, I wanted to give a quick shout-out to our deputy mayor, Eileen Decker, because she oversees the UAWC funding and brings that to the Public Safety Committee and has been a stalwart in making sure that we get those funds for those kinds of services. So I really appreciate, as busy as you are, focusing on those critical future needs as well. One of my favorite materials. And most people don't know what this is. Looks very soft and thin. It's actually bulletproof. This is a fiber, carbon fiber, and recently developed and patented technology for retrofitting buildings. This can be wrapped along columns, pipes, all types of infrastructure, under bridges, and for those that, even those concrete pillars that have rebar, those are what fold quickly. And this wrapping around it for pennies on the dollar will stabilize all of those facilities. These are the kinds of technologies we've got to talk about in terms of retrofitting, where we used to talk about tens of thousands of dollars to retrofit a building, could now be hundreds of dollars. And so mandating that we do that quickly to save lives and to save countless structures, we've got to think about, particularly in those concrete soft-story buildings, the tilt-up buildings and those other types of older infrastructure buildings, those are the ones that are most vulnerable in society today. Those are the oldest infrastructure facilities, those housing units are, and those oldest ones that are here in Los Angeles. Many in LA that are living in those have been there for 30, or 40, or 50 years. These are our seniors. These are folks on fixed or lower incomes. These are the ones that are absolutely the most vulnerable and seismically are absolutely the most vulnerable. And so one of the things that recently, this last year, I partnered with Adrin Nazarian in a bill that the governor did not sign, but what we'd like to do is reintroduce it next year and get some support, and there was a resolution of support here, to make the retrofitting, which I think is critically important to do, an incentive for building owners and apartment owners. Because for every dollar they spend in the building in retrofitting, they don't see that back in rents. And we're not asking them to pass it through. We're asking for a tax credit. And so what we need to do is, besides unfunded mandates, and I think we've done a lot of those things in building codes, which has been great for new construction, but we've got to go deal with what we've got on the books today in our current inventory and spread the word and educate and inform owners of these properties that there is new technology out there. There are ways to do it effectively and efficiently. And start looking at, once we have the inventory done, how we can start applying the science to the building and the materials. Where are we on inventorying those soft-story buildings and what are we looking at?
Mitchell, can you hit your button again?
I'll just leave it with that last question, if I could.
Well, actually, that's by your directive, you, you know, the Department of Building and Safety, General Manager Ray Chan here, has been undertaking that effort. It's not quite complete, but I think it will be very soon. And we definitely have a lot of buildings that are going to fall under this category.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Jones, I appreciate your outlining your water concerns. I think the internal potential for pipe breakage might be more obvious, but the concerns about the San Andreas Fault and the state water project going over that, I think, are serious. And also, have you looked at the Bay Delta levees and the vulnerability to earthquakes there?
Oh, there's no question that we have an extra risk that an earthquake near the Bay Delta could be bringing down the levees. I mean, they are 19th century, done by farmers. They aren't engineered levees. And the problem, if you fail the levee in an earthquake, if you fail it in a flood, you've got fresh water flushing out to sea, and you can potentially get in and rebuild it before you've got saltwater coming back into the system. When you fail it in an earthquake, especially if it were in summer, you would have a negative flow and you would get saltwater into the Bay Delta very quickly. And that's a major problem, because right now, we get our water directly from the Bay Delta, and it would probably be, you know, there's the potential for it being so contaminated it wouldn't be usable.
And have you looked at the proposed tunnel project, which would, in essence, make us more dependent on water from Northern California?
I have not looked at it personally, no.
And have you looked at our power supply? Because I think we also have a similar set of issues. Do we continue to build more distant projects, you know, as good as they may be, like solar plants and wind and other things? Or are we better off to focus on more local solar and things that are more locally dependent?
Well, I mean, there's always obviously a trade-off. You've got to deal with the fact that transmission across the fault could be disrupted. That, again, is something that's not under the city's direct control. We need to be working with CalISO and Edison and the other partners that are, you know, the electric grid is a pretty complicated system right now. And, but then you've got to trade-off that, right now, most of our in-basin generation happens through natural gas, and the natural gas lines have to cross the San Andreas Fault. And so it may feel like we have local, but we perhaps even have less, that's less reliable, more vulnerable, because how do you get the natural gas in? Right now, that all has to cross the San Andreas, and again, those pipes haven't been retrofitted. So looking at what we can do with, as a regional, there's a lot that the city can do itself, but there's another big piece that's going to be working with the region, all of the other governments at risk, because we aren't in isolation.
Yeah, I guess that's true of water also, obviously.
Exactly.
It sounds like our only local resource is probably more local solar.
Right. The degree that we could do local solar. And that's actually, you know, right now, you've got a situation, we've got the, you know, the solar still depends on the grid being in place, and we really, being able to keep the grid up and functioning to some level is critical for maintaining the viability even of solar systems.
Thank you very much.
Great. Well, thank you all, and if you have any individual questions about your district, feel free to contact us, and we are willing to, you know, help you with things about your own district.
Sorry, we have three more members on the queue. Mr. Bonin?
Oh. Sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of us who, I'm sure, have questions on this. Your presentation was incredibly informative and frighteningly sobering. It's, you know, we sometimes hear a part of this discussion and realize, okay, we have a lot of work to do when we hear another part. When you hear it all under the umbrella, it really is kind of scary. We're all about metrics. We're trying to do everything in terms of metrics. So in order to figure out how well we're doing over the next few years, I have a question that you might not want me to ask, and I actually, I'm not sure I want to know the answer, but if you were going to give us a letter grade in terms of how well we're doing on preparedness and readiness for response after a quake, what would you give us?
I'd like to defer the answer till we see how much of the mayor's plan gets through, because I think it's going to change the answer a lot.
So, okay, well, that...
If we did nothing, we're in pretty bad shape. I'm not sure how low I'd go on the letter grade. You need, you know, what's your curve? Who are we comparing to? San Francisco is probably at the leader in the country at this point. If we're comparing to them, we aren't doing as well right now. I really hope we're going to change that. If we're comparing to, you know, cities on the East Coast, which do have earthquakes, even if less often, we're in a lot better shape than them. So it's a relative issue.
Yeah. I mean, the reason I asked is, once we do the stuff the mayor's recommending, I want to know how much we've improved, but...
I'll go up if we, yeah. Two, three letter grades, I mean, we'll go from being really in trouble to, I think, being able to make it through. I think one thing that's really important, we are not, we can't try to prevent all losses. What we're trying to do is make it that we are resilient enough that we can get the pieces back together quickly. Some things are going to go wrong. Let's just make sure it's not so many of them that our economic system collapses.
So let me ask a couple of them about the response after a quake. I'm curious how, whether you've evaluated how ready we are in terms of our fire protection and suppression. When the Northridge quake hit, we had 17 more companies in LAFD than we do now. And that was a relatively moderate quake compared to what we're looking at potentially happening here. How have you examined that, and what do we need to do there?
No, I really, I'm not looking much at response. I really am focusing on mitigation and trying to prevent the losses in the first place. And, yeah, that's another one where we're a lot better than we could be, and obviously not as good as we could be, and so it becomes a greatest thing. But I haven't done any direct evaluation of the response capabilities.
Okay. And I keep hearing about a term, fault creep, and that USGS and Caltech are studying it in Northern California. What exactly is it, and are they looking at it down here?
Yes. Fault creep just means, right, the plate tectonics is moving, we build up stress across a fault. You have to build up enough stress that when you overcome it, you have the earthquake. Sometimes you get a little bit of movement at the surface. We call that fault creep. And so when you look at how much stress or strain has accumulated towards an earthquake, it's plate tectonics minus what happens through the creep. And we are monitoring it across California. Creep is a bigger issue in Northern California than here in the South. That's not good news. That means we're mostly completely locked. We don't get, we don't relieve any of the strain through fault creep in general. There's a tiny amount in the Salt and Sea area. But if you took the evaluation that's been going on in the news right now about Northern California and did it for Southern California, we would have had our earthquake 100 years ago. Right? So that's not telling them they're going to have an earthquake. We're evidence that you can go way beyond the average recurrence time.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I want to introduce quickly Dr. Henry Ely from Los Angeles Community College is here with his poli sci class. You please stand. Welcome to the LA City Council meeting. Welcome. We have two more members on the queue. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. Doctor, I was just wondering, right after this information came out about the study from up north, there's a couple of motions in the council that dealt with the concrete buildings, and I may have the wrong term, but I think it's the soft story of the soft structures. Are you aware of what progress has been made on those evaluations? And can you give us an assessment if you're aware of, if we made progress?
Well, the evaluations are going on. There's a lot of work that's been going on, and we're very close to having the overview of what the number of buildings are. It's a challenge, you guys have a lot of buildings. It's a pretty challenging process, but it's very close to being done, I believe.
Okay. Let me ask, Building and Safety?
Yeah.
Did you have more specific information as to what our progress and where we might be on those two issues?
Yeah, we've been working very closely with the mayor's office and also Dr. Lucy Jones on two retrofit programs. The first one is soft-story retrofit programs, where we have already finished the initial assessment through Google Earth in terms of number of soft-story buildings that we may have in the city of Los Angeles. City of Los Angeles has a total of 1.1 million structures, and among them, the number of soft-story that we could, we could find at this point is approximately close to 30,000 possible soft-story buildings. But we are scaling it down through a site visit on every single one of them. For example, we finished Council District 2, because Council District 2 has the highest number of soft-story building, and we found that there's approximately 2,000 soft-story building in Council District 2. Based on our guesstimation, each of our inspector could do approximately 50 site visits every day and come up with a good report. We are very hopeful that we will have a list of all soft-story buildings in the city of Los Angeles by January. And that is for the soft-story program. And we believe that, working with Dr. Lucy Jones at the mayor's office and also the structural engineers, we already came up with ordinance that we could present to council along with Dr. Lucy Jones' report. And based on the ordinance, we are going to be able to retrofit many of those buildings in the most economic ways, and also we hope that we could finish this program and get all buildings retrofitted in the time span of about four to five years.
Let me just ask, you said about the soft story. What about concrete buildings?
The concrete buildings, we're starting from the list with, you know, from Berkeley. There, it's a more complicated problem, because you can't tell whether or not, you can't do an outside visual inspection and determine whether or not you've got the deficient construction. It's going to require structural engineering analysis, but we have no reason to think that the number from the academics of about 1,500 is the right place to be.
Okay. Thank you. And colleagues, one thing, somebody mentioned earlier about a means of incentivizing the repairs. One thing we just found out from housing in our own ordinances is that if we impose a repair on a building owner, they can't pass it through to tenants. So it's not, all of them have to be dealt with on an incentive or looking for other funding.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the presentation. I think it's really helpful, because I think the misnomer is that we are constantly focusing on sort of structures and the damage and the life of loss, which obviously are critical. But I think your presentation helps underscore the importance for our infrastructure. I think specifically, you mentioned how important water is in terms of supply in case we have a seismic event that is catastrophic. And I think the way that you made the presentation also helped in terms of what it means regionally, because the 1906 example of having a 1.5% impact on state or GDP nationally, I think is really important. And fortunately, we have not had an event that had that kind of sort of national effect. But I just wonder out loud, when you speak to sort of what an impact California could have as a region for the country if we're not prepared from a supply perspective, and I think what's sort of the good news, bad news about this drought is that water is at the forefront of people's conversations, including when you're talking about seismic events. So I would just sort of push to see what it is that we could do clearly if there is a seismic event in the North, and because of the subsidence issues and because it only takes half a G-force to be able to sort of wipe out the delta, then clearly we want to invest in more infrastructure to increase our supply here locally. But the flip side of that is if the seismic event devastates our supply here, if we were effective to create that type of supply, we would also want to make sure that Northern California is in good shape in order to sort of get us through. And in the event that we have a situation where they're crippled by a seismic event, then we should regionally do our part and make sure that we have the capability to move supply to them, should that be the case. So I just wonder, when you finish your report and your findings, understanding that this is about a regional sort of catastrophe that could have national sort of effect, thinking larger than Los Angeles seems to be something that we probably ought to do, not just as a region, but as stewards to California. How will you do that moving forward?
Yeah, you're giving me a lot of power, it seems. I, my job as a scientist is to help people understand so that you, as policymakers, have the right information with which to make your decisions. And I think when we look at this issue, you're right, that the water has to be seen as a statewide issue. It trades off back and forth. When we look at how to do local supplies, I think that the most important aspect there is being able to, really be able to get back to using our groundwater... is being able to, really be able to get back to using our groundwater. I think you all know that the contamination issues have led us to abandon a lot of local aquifers. And that's where we become even more dependent on the water coming in from outside. And when we look at the drought issues, how do we do it? You know, we obviously have to do the reduction in use that the mayor was calling for yesterday. That's really important stuff. But I will admit, I listened to what I meant, yeah, the more we reduce the use now, the less buffer we're going to have after the earthquake, right? So we can't just do it by reducing the use. We really need to be recovering our local water sources and how to recharge them. The other thing, you know, our whole, we have a flood control system that's there for really good reasons. We used to have devastating floods, but it has kept that water from recharging our groundwater table. And so those are some of the engineering challenges. How do we get back to recharging local water while protecting us from the flood because it isn't just earthquakes? And we have to do that. I think the chances of us having a lot of water descend north, just the relative water balance is not going to make that really common. But the more that we don't need to use what's coming from the north, the more that's going to be available to stay there when they lose part of their supplies.
And again, I think that what the challenge here is, you know, clearly in a terrible, catastrophic seismic event, distribution's going to be the biggest problem. Supply, though, is what we're going to have to really sort of focus on and make sure that we have the capabilities to either lend a hand or limp along. Unlike electricity, we can live in the dark in the evenings. We can live without sort of some of those luxuries, but we can't live without water. So I absolutely appreciate your presentation and look forward to your final, final report so that we can hopefully have some policy conversations before us colleagues that will help us not just increase our supply, but making sure that we're stewards to our neighbors and thinking of Los Angeles as a regional, which it clearly is, partner in anything that happens in California and in this country. Thank you.
Exactly. Thank you.
Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Jones, for your report. Just kind of piggyback off Mr. Fuentes and when it comes to infrastructure and, and water issues facing a large earthquake, I have some concerns about the Port of Los Angeles and its unique challenges when it comes to both safety and productivity in the case of a large earthquake. For example, California ports import a million barrels of oil a day through its ports. And a major oil spill associated with, with an earthquake could cause the closure of a major port for, for days, if not weeks, causing significant economic effects up and down our state. Tell me about the specific challenges that we face at the Port of Los Angeles and how we, we should be prepared? And also, how can the port be used as a resource? And how can it play a role in importing emergency supplies and materials for rebuilding in the event of a large disruptive earthquake?
Okay. The good news, if you want to call it, is that for the San Andreas earthquake, which is the most common of our big earthquakes, but far from our only one, for that earthquake, the shaking at the port is not too bad. We spent quite a bit of effort in our modeling of that earthquake to understand the impact on the port and discovered that the port's in pretty good shape for that earthquake. Now, there are other earthquakes and it's on quite soft soil, so there will always be amplification of shaking in the area. In, again, back to the San Andreas earthquake, a really big issue for the port that's not directly in, in the city's control, and that makes it more challenging, is the fact of how much of the outflow from the port to the rest of the country crosses the San Andreas again. So you talk about all that oil coming in, it's refined down there by the port and goes out through Cajon Pass across the San Andreas Fault to Arizona and Nevada. They get their gasoline because of the Port of LA. The port may be fine through the earthquake, but we're now going to break the pipelines as they cross the San Andreas. And unfortunately, they cross the natural gas pipeline at the San Andreas. And the modeling that we did several years ago said crater and explosion and a really potentially catastrophic fire that could be induced because of that. Also, all of the, you know, most of the goods go out through railway lines, again, crossing the San Andreas Fault, going to be broken, you're not going to be able to repair them because of that fire that got going. So this is where I think we need, that gets back to this regional picture. How do we work together across Southern California? You know, we know where the damage is going to be. We know there is engineering to prevent it. How do we get the multiple jurisdictions, all of the stakeholders together to say this is worth doing and how do we get it, get it accomplished? So I think actually the biggest issues for the San Andreas earthquake from the port is going to be the cutoff of distribution to the rest of the country. For the port itself, of course, we could have local earthquakes. And I think that a lot of preparedness around the fact that you've got bad soil conditions and an amplification of shaking, a lot of liquefaction, the potential, extra potential for broken water means because of that liquefaction potential. But I'd be happy to follow up with you and talk more about details for it.
Doc, thank you.
Thank you.
For coming, giving us a invaluable update. I do have one card, but I do want to thank you. I have a card on the item, so I'm going to have to bring somebody else to the podium. If you could sit next to Ray Wannacala.
My opinion on this item is that we're doing too much talking and not doing enough about it. We're just blah, 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 blah. You could have millions of bottles of water on reserve in many different places. You could do a lot of things, but you're not going to do it. You'll blame it on lack of money, lack of this, lack of that. What it is, is lack of thinking ahead. And that's what city council is very good at. Very good at not really thinking about things. They're just thinking about money, 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 money. Where are we going to get more money? More money, more money. Less services for people. You can solve the problem, at least the water problem, by providing a lot of reservoirs, a lot of water tanks, a lot of bottles of water all over the city, all over the place. You know, bottles of water that could last to 100 years in the bottle or whatever.
Barrels.
Whatever you got to do. So it's not such a huge problem. The problem is that we don't really want to address the items that we need to address. And as far as how many people are going to be homeless? How many people are homeless now? And they survive somehow, but you, the ones that keep the other ones homeless, are going to have a hard time during the earthquake because it's going to be a homeless person that's going to tell you how to live. They're going to teach you how to get around because right now you're a bunch of idiots riding in your limousines. That's all you are.
Thank you. Okay, again, I want to thank Dr. Jones. Members, there's no action required on this issue, so we will now move on. And again, thank you very much. I want to quickly take up item 12. It's my understanding that there was an amendment that has been circulated. True. Okay, well, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now I'm going to move to item 18. Mr. Kukorian, would you might like to open it up on item 18? Mr. City Attorney, relax, you can go first.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a reminder to the council members that this is a fair hearing matter, requiring their heightened attention to the speaker at the podium or to their video displays on their monitors at their desk.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, the advisory, advisory agency of the planning department approved and adopted a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration and tracked on this, tentative tracked on this project. Neighbors in the area appealed this significant development. And unfortunately, that appeal was not heard by the area planning commission, so it is before us today. What I'd like to do is invite both the applicant and the appellant and members of the public to speak today. And then, well, let's, let's start with that. Let's just start with hearing from members of the public as well as the applicant and the, and the appellant.
Fine, that'll be the way we proceed. David, I think it's Mince, and if I mispronounced it, please correct me. Ben, Ben Resnick, followed by Jonathan Scribner, maybe. But anyway, sir, go right ahead.
My name is Dave Mince. I reside at 12843 Sarah Street in Studio City. And for the record, I oppose and have appealed the advisory agency's approval of the tentative tract number 72101- CN to develop 32 condo units at 4600 Coldwater Canyon. I request that the city council move to include the very detailed conditions of the Studio City Neighborhood Council passed on July 22nd under motion 2014-07-16-13A. These conditions were outlined in my appeal. While I support all of the conditions present in that motion, time prohibits me from touching upon all of them. As the owner of the property abutting the, the, the project, my greatest concern lies with seeing that the mature trees along my property line are protected and that their survival insured during the project and beyond. At a minimum, I urge the city council to require the developer to take necessary actions to protect these trees, which are estimated by a certified arborist to be 40 years old and were appraised at over $100,000. As property owners abutting the proposed project, we strongly support the board of the Studio City Neighborhood Council and the guidelines that they set forth for the development of our community and specifically this project. Thank you for your time this morning.
Mr. Mince, if there's anything else, you, the appellant, if there's anything else you'd like to say, I would like to afford you additional seconds if you'd like to say anything else.
I appreciate that consideration. I do have several neighbors here prepared to speak, and I think between all of us, we'll touch upon those issues. Thank you for that consideration, though.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Resnick? And so, Ben, you'll be given, you're representing the...
The applicant, the property owner.
Okay, so we'll give you an extra minute as well, if needed.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the council. My name is Ben Resnick. Good to see you all, with the law firm of Jeffrey Mangles, Butler and Mitchell. What you have before you today is SB 1818, density bonus project, infill typical project. It's 32 units on Coldwater Canyon, a major street in the valley. The neighbor who just spoke is the appellant. He has a house behind there. This project has gone through an appeal already. It went through the city planning commission when the density bonus was appealed. At that point, all these arguments were similarly raised and discussed at the planning commission in detail. At that point, certain compromises were made because you had the legal authority to do it back then under the density bonus provision. And there were some cutouts done to the back of the building. There was something done to the garage to enable a little bit more separation and the growing of trees on our client's property. Now, that is a final action that's been determined. Now we come along for the track map to make this a condominium project. Now, mind you, my client does not need to make this condominium. He can just go tomorrow and pull a building permit and build apartments. The only reason it's before you is because when you ask to be a condominium project, you go through a track map. Track maps are regulated by the subdivision map act very specifically. The staff report that was submitted to you specifically says that the city does not have the legal authority to impose what it is that appellant just spoke about. The city does not have the legal authority through a subdivision process to change the design of the building, to tinker with it. Not only does your staff report from the planning department say that, but your staff report concedes that they consulted with the city attorney. The city attorney said you don't have the legal authority to do this. So I would think that while we understand the appellant would like to preserve some sense of privacy, he lives behind Coldwater Canyon, the fact is that this is an SB 1818 project. It's a density bonus project, complies with all the rules and regulations the city has. And you don't have the legal authority to impose more conditions on this project. I would think, at the end of the day, I understand the need to try to accommodate and to try to work, but the reality is, you all, of course, also took an oath of office to uphold the law. I would think that at some point, we need to uphold the law as well. And while that may not be the desired result, the fact is that that's the position this project is in. And so with that, I ask that you affirm the planning department's advisory agency approval of the project, not impose these additional conditions, which cannot withstand any sort of legal action anyways, and approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. So Jonathan, and I'll have you pronounce the last name. And where's Jeffrey Grunfeld? Jeffrey, are you here? You could line up behind Jonathan. And then we'll have Carmen. Carrasco. Yes, sir.
My name is Jonathan Schreiber, and I live in the cul-de-sac across the street from Dave Mince, the appellant. First, I'd like to thank council member Kukorian's office as well as Cara Terosian, who's been helping us in, in terms of preparation and discussion and trying to open a dialogue with the, the proposed builder of this site. Unfortunately, we've worked with the Studio City Neighborhood Council, we've worked through as many channels as we can, but we've never had a hearing with the, directly with the builder. We are terribly disappointed because we asked for what we would think are things to preserve the quality of our neighborhood. This very, very imposing building is going to overlook our entire cul-de-sac, and it's going to really impact the quality of our life in that cul-de-sac. And the thing that distresses me the most, other neighbors will talk about, will talk about other things, is the fact that, you know, we go to the Studio City Neighborhood Council, it's, it's something that, you know, the city council has given power to. They've set guidelines that were attached in the appeal that Dave Mince prepared. Those guidelines are very, very clear, and the guidelines that the Studio City Neighborhood Council for apartments or condominiums are not being followed. If there's going to be teeth within neighborhood council statements, it really is in our best interest to try and take up these local issues, not with your time, but on a much more localized level at the, at the neighborhood council level. In, in this particular case, the conditions that are not met are the buffering landscape, which requires a larger setback, there are no, it says that there should be no balconies on the sides or the rear, articulation on rear walls, minimum of 2.5 parking spaces per unit and sufficient guest parking. None of those standards are met, and unfortunately, this undercuts the power of the neighborhood council, weak as that may be in some cases. Thank you.
Thank you. So Jeffrey Grunfeld.
Grunfeld.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Grunfeld. I live at 12844 Sarah Street, and I've lived there and owned there for the last 22 years. Thank you all for hearing me. I hope I have as much time as Dr. Jones, but probably not. There are laws on the book for mansionization. If I were to buy a lot in Studio City, I'm restricted by how much density and square footage I can put on it. But there are legal loopholes known as SB 1818, who I think its purpose was to enhance affordable rental housing. And now we have a developer cynically exploiting that, claiming that he is the champion of very low-income tenants so that he can supersize a project and put an additional nine units with inadequate parking, with requests for variance in public area, with requests in area for minimizing his setback. We basically have a supersized project, the veritable McDonald's in our backyard. Currently, the parking is 61, which is less than two to one. No one has mentioned yet, but the lot at 4600 Coldwater is cut deeper. It, so it extends back farther into our cul-de-sac, which means that with the minimal setbacks being proposed by the developer, there is absolutely no way that the landscaping can mitigate its impact in terms of blocking out sunlight. mitigate its impact in terms of blocking out sunlight and so many other factors. I know that a friend of mine has a home on Addison, and I've talked about this. He has a home that one and a half blocks west of Coldwater has no street parking because of the spillover of apartments. The same thing will happen with 4600 Coldwater. We essentially will be the parking lot for this man's structure. So I urge, he has yet to meet with us in terms of implementing some of the area council's suggestions.
Thank you.
We're not opposed to development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I can get the next speaker, just come up and identify yourself.
My name is Carmen Carrasco. I live at 12815 Sarah Street. We've lived there for 11 years. I'm an architect, and I took interest in this project to save the quality of our cul-de-sac. The project in question will be approximately 45 feet tall, and it will be approximately 10 to 15 feet away from a 20-foot, 18 to 20-foot-tall, single-family residence. You know, this is not, this is one of many projects that is happening in Studio City. There's been just a barrage of condo development. We feel that, you know, we were trying to work with the Neighborhood Council in Studio City to ask for some minor mitigations to create responsible development. And as an architect with, you know, we know that we have to follow zoning ordinances, the recommendations of council, et cetera, but we're looking to partner with developers to try to create a better quality of community, which I think is something that everybody in Los Angeles, I would hope, would strive for. We asked for terracing on the back of this building so that more light, more privacy could be afforded to the neighborhood and the cul-de-sac. And we also were seeking to remove the balconies from the back of the building because right now, there are balconies on the back of the building adjacent, which is another project by the same developer. And we can hear those people standing out on their balconies, talking, partying, because they're way above us, the sound travels down, and it's very disruptive to what was once a very quiet cul-de-sac. You know, anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Akala.
Well, they're finally trying to make a project for semi-rich people or well-to-do people, look like my neighborhood in the ghetto. You should go to the ghetto and everybody.
Stay on the subject.
Well, they're talking about people partying and making noise.
No, that's not the subject. Stay on the item 18.
I know. If you build this project, obviously, the neighbors don't want it. They don't want it the way it's being proposed. The way it's being proposed is just to make more money, more money, more money, more money. And it doesn't matter about the quality of life of the neighbors, the people that live there already. It's all about more money. So are you going to approve this despite the fact that the neighborhood doesn't want it? And then you have the Neighborhood Council that you appointed, and you're going to say to the Neighborhood Council, you know what? We don't really care about your advice. We make the rules, and if we want exceptions, we'll do them because we want more money, more money, more money. And that's what it's all about, right? Oh, by the way, put a few liquor stores there, too, because then you get more money.
Stay on this, on the item.
Yeah, yeah. I think they need more liquor stores in that project.
That's not the item. Mr. Herman?
More money, more money.
Do not disturb the council meeting, Mr. Akala. Mr. Herman?
Quality of life, recommendation, better quality for a community. We've heard the complaints and the concerns addressed by people, individuals that live in this targeted area, by the wrongdoing of mansionization, violations of municipal codes of variances, and exploiting low-income units at a time when we already see the conditions of less housing. Thank you, Dion, for sitting down. The density issue here has always existed. We've heard complaints over and over about density. And I can feel the problem on a personal note because I grew up in an area with density, with large projects built in areas that are basically overcrowded. The density for parking conditions is enormous. And the gentleman back there who spoke on the very first point of view of this, he was right. You're going to destroy life, killing trees that he took the time to grow on his property so you can allow density and recommend this disapproval for 72101CN adopt? No. Under Municipal Code Section 17.0683, subdivision four, for one law to develop 32 units, again, one law to develop 32 condominium units. I oppose, and I am with the neighbors of that area in the valley, that these declarations must be postponed. We're in opposition to it in order that the city will exploit more under SB 18 for safer neighborhoods, recommendations for quality of life in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And after Mr. Walsh, the public hearing will be closed on this item.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. To those neighbors here, you can get up and say it's illegal to your blue in the face. They don't care. All they care about is you're hiring a lawyer. Remember, the gadflies were kicked out of this building. We hired a lawyer. We went to court. We won the federal case, and they paid...
Stay on this, stay on this item.
This is an example.
Stay on this item.
They paid $600,000 of our lawyer's...
Stay on this item.
I am giving you an example. That's what you must do. You can see the way they heckle me, because you're a racist, and you don't like me because I'm white and I'm nasty. I want you to know that you must hire a lawyer, and...
No, I just want you to stay on the item, Mr. Walsh.
I am asking you, negative declaration, no. Don't. If you want to pursue this negative declaration, you must hire a lawyer. HollywoodHighlands.org. You are despicable.
No, your time is up. All right, Mr. City Attorney, did you want to make a statement before I call on Mr. Krikorian?
Yes, Mr. President. If this matter will be...
I'll speak. I'll speak.
Mr. Krikorian, go.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, this project is a terrific example of the failings of SB 1818. We have a building in the district right now on Coldwater Canyon that has 16 rent-controlled apartments, including the residences of many elderly people who've been there for a long time. But SB 1818 will allow the construction of a 32-unit building, of which only four units will be affordable. So my district, this neighborhood, our city, will lose 12 rent-controlled, affordable housing units because of a ridiculous state law that requires these density bonuses in the, under the false guise of encouraging affordable housing. Thankfully, Assemblymember Audrey Nazarian authored AB 2222, which has been passed by the legislature, signed by the governor, which will prevent this kind of situation by requiring that at least, at least the same number of affordable housing units be included in a new project. Unfortunately, that law doesn't take effect until January 1st, and it won't provide any protection in this kind of a situation with this building. The neighbors in this area have made very reasonable requests for conditions, exceptionally reasonable requests for conditions. They've worked through the process. They've gone to the Neighborhood Council. They've tried to build a consensus with the Neighborhood Council around those conditions. And I'm very supportive of the statements that were made by the folks who came up here in support of the appelleant. Unfortunately, we have heard from Mr., from counsel for the applicant today, the legal arguments that they are making. The applicant, through counsel, has raised the specter of litigation against the city arising out of these potential conditions. And so what I would ask, members, is that we continue this matter until Friday, and I will look to the city attorney for guidance on how we do that. But I would like to continue the matter until Friday. I would like to have a closed session so that we can confer with council about the merits or lack thereof of the threat of litigation and what might be available as options for the city to be able to take in this situation. So, Mr. City Attorney, is there anything else we need to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Krikorian. Since the posting of Friday's agenda, statements threatening litigation have been made, and that the last day for council action is Friday, council should move to add closed session language to the continuation agenda, specifically that there is significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, and more specifically, E4 and E5 statements threatening litigation. Council should vote to add that language.
Okay, before we do that, Mr. Gretz?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we've had a few situations like this in my district where the applicant was able to do SB 18 and didn't have to listen to the neighbors, but actually made an effort to meet with them and find some common ground and make it a better project for the neighborhood. So even if he has the legal leverage, I would just ask out of common decency that they get together and at least see if there are things that won't harm the project but could be done to make it more workable for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Gretz, and you anticipated my next statement because this is one of those situations where these are not neighbors who are saying, don't build anything in our neighborhood, we're going to lie down in front of the bulldozers, you know, not in my backyard. They're not saying that at all. They're saying, work with us, try to adopt some reasonable conditions so that in a situation like this, we can have a building be built that, but will have conditions in it that will protect the quality of life in the neighborhood. There's nothing unreasonable about that at all. That's the way the process is supposed to work. Neighbors are supposed to have the ability to be able to do that. That's why we have Neighborhood Councils through which they can work. And I'm very disappointed, frankly, that there hasn't been more progress made to try to work cooperatively towards a consensus resolution of this because, you know, I can certainly say, as a general matter, you will get a lot more attention from me and my office as a developer if you make an effort to work with neighbors than if you attempt to just bulldoze over them based on your legal principles as stated by your council. So I just want to make that statement for this record. And with that...
So why don't we, I'm prepared, Mr. City Attorney, to continue this till Friday, but you indicated that a vote needed to take place?
There should be findings, yes.
Okay, so let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now we will continue this item until Friday. Madam Clerk, and what date is that?
October 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Okay, let's go to item, thank you all for coming down. We'll go to item eight. Carol, and I can't quite get the last name, so maybe if you, from the Zen Center, if you come forward and identify yourself, followed by Anna. Yes, hi.
Hello, my name is, I guess, my name is Carol Schmidt. I'm a retired schoolteacher, Ella USD. I'm here on behalf of the Zen Center of Los Angeles. We are opposing the street vacation, and we're wondering why it's being discussed, what benefit is to accrue from this. We have, on 11/16/06, the Department of Transportation denied this street vacation. They said, quote, "It's concerned that the vacation will increase traffic congestion by eliminating the secondary route to the signalized intersection of Arolo Street and San Marino Street." It further said, this is a quote from the Department of Transportation when they denied this vacation, they said, "This vacation should be denied because it is currently improved and used by the general public for traffic circulation. The elimination of this portion of the public street may result in adverse impact and traffic congestion." Now, I spoke to Fire Chief Captain Espinoza of the fire station at Western and Freeway 10, and he told me, I quote, "We all use this. There's a four-block stretch of street densely populated on Normandy between Olympic and Seventh that would be cut off from emergency services. They would have to go around a longer way, so it would impact the delivery of emergency vehicles to this four-block, very densely populated neighborhood." Why, why is this being done? Has a traffic study been done on this? At this, later, in 2007, there had, no traffic study had been done on this. St. Mary's Church across the street Episcopal Church is opposing this for their parishioners' delayed access. Zen Center of Los Angeles has been in this city for 50 years, and we are, it's going to adversely affect, okay, traffic study. Has a traffic study been done on this?
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Anna Apostolos, if you come forward.
Hello, I'm here to ask for the approval of the vacation at Normandy and Arolo. I am Anna Apostolos. I'm with the Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative, and I am the manager of the Madang Project. This project was funded by the CRA, and that funding was nearly lost more than once during the dismantling of that agency. One of the key factors in saving this project was the overwhelming community support demonstrated at every DLA and Oversight Board hearing. I believe that there was a vacation that was approved back in 2009 or in that whereabouts, and it, the community just did not follow up on the conditions. So also, the, there has been, regarding the emergency services, there has been accommodation for that within this vacation project. So when we learned in September of the specific concerns of the congregation of St. Mary's and other neighbors regarding the pending vacation, Lonnie, the steering committee, and the architect met with the representatives from these groups, and the design was revised to reflect the consensus that we reached. This project now provides for 24/7 pedestrian access via pathway through the vacated area, which will be security consciously lit and landscaped. The plaza gates will utilize a daily self-locking and opening mechanism, much like the one currently in use by the Department of Wreck and Parks. The strategic fencing will be removed from the adjacent Korean Pavilion, which will allow that same access to the Pavilion, dawn to dusk. The project name will be changed to reflect the diversity of the neighborhood to La Placita Madang. Additionally...
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Now, does Mr. Akala have any more time? Okay, so then that ends the public comment on this issue. So let's prepare to vote. Could we open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Okay. We're going to now move to, so that passes. So we're going to now move to item 13, called special by Cards, is it Lydia Moreno? Please come forward. Window, I can't quite... Wendell, I can't quite make out the last name, but if... Please come forward. And Mr. Herman. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Lydia Moreno. I'm here to represent the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council, of which I am an executive board member. I'm also a resident of Solano Avenue. And I am here because last night, we passed a community impact statement, which was filed last night. I'd like to read this statement for you guys. The HNC adopted the following resolution. "We oppose the vacation of the Solano Avenue. In the community of Solano Canyon..." "The community of Solano Canyon is traversed and separated by the 110 freeway. A pedestrian tunnel under the 110 freeway connects the lower side of Solano Canyon community to the other side of the canyon. Upon exiting the tunnel, on the other side of Solano Canyon, there's a flat sidewalk that leads all residents directly to their homes. As such, Solano Canyon elderly ethnic Asian and Latino population and the children of middle school and high school age, as well as the residents of the community without motor vehicles, rely on the sidewalk in front of Solano Elementary School as a direct route to and from Solano Canyon. However, the pedestrian tunnel on the 110 freeway, which connects the community of Solano Canyon, attracts the unpredictably mentally ill and those looking to engage in unsavory acts of lewd conduct. In recent years, the underage girls and adult women have been sexually and bodily assaulted in that tunnel. The available sidewalk in front of the elementary school has served these victims with a direct route of escape from their violent attackers. The proposed vacation of the sidewalk will act to close off this essential escape route to the victims of violent sexual assault. The proposed vacation of the sidewalk will invariably disallow a sexual assault victim the opportunity to escape her attacker."
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could get Wendell. I'll have you come up and pronounce your last name. So Wendell?
Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Wendell Lopez. I am the founder and first vice president of the Solano Canyon Community Organization. I am here to speak in opposition to the vacation of the Solano Avenue Street. I want to thank Councilman Corretts and Councilman Krikorian for the prior comments on the other issue, talk about being good neighbors, working with the process, with the community council, looking for compromise. On this issue, this community has done that every step of the way. Our concern is with the sidewalk. It is a flat escape route. As Ms. Moreno stated last night, our neighborhood council, 25 to 0, passed a resolution in opposition. Unfortunately, there have been sexual assaults in the tunnel. When you leave the tunnel, there's a flight sidewalk. That sidewalk is the only escape route. It is direct and flat for these sexual assault victims. I'm here to ask that you preserve the escape route for these sexual assault victims. Otherwise, their only hope in the tunnel, if they suffer an assault, is to merely survive it and somehow limp out. To propose the version of pedestrian traffic will cause them to have a long walk around at an uphill grade running a gauntlet. The assaults will continue. So my only plea, the only ask that we have, is preserve the sidewalk. The emphasis is, it is the escape route for these potential victims. And it is unfortunate, the last attack occurred about two years ago. They will not go away. That's unfortunate, they will not diminish. Let's not make this more difficult upon these victims. Let's not cut off the only direct and flat escape route that they have. Let's not make them run uphill. I thank you.
No, I thank you.
Good afternoon. I know exactly what the gentleman is talking about when he talks about assaults. And to preserve the sidewalk's accessibility? I don't get that point. We need accessibility to go in and out. Now, what Mr. Johnson threatened me back there, telling me to sit down or he's going to arrest me, I don't appreciate that.
No, would you stay on the subject? That has nothing to do with this.
... According to the caten of the Solano Avenue Amador Place to its southerly terminus, Public Works Gang Reduction Committee reports findings adopt. I oppose. I oppose because without consent, you're violating the rights of persons and the public for accessibility within this corridor area that's being affected and adversely being affected when you're being assaulted in an area that is not safe. So we need that accessibility of a sidewalk. One minute. Thank you.
Okay. Let's... Oh, Mr. Sedia?
Yes, colleagues. I just want to, for the record, make sure that you understand what you're voting on. Our office has met many times with the L.A. Unified School District, with the LAPD. Obviously, safety is at the top of our list. This vacation is supported by the school principal and by the PTA. This plan will restore the original auditorium for intended purposes and move children out of portables and into a safe and secure school campus. In working with the community and the school district and the LAPD, we are creating a pedestrian walkway, sufficient lighting, sufficient security cameras with the collaboration between the L.A. USD and the LAPD. And in addition, this will provide joint use opportunities in the future when we find the appropriate partner. And you should know that there is also an agreement between the L.A. USD and the Caltrans for planning sustainable landscaping, clearing overgrowth and debris. And so there's a whole range, as you can see, of conditions that were set forth through this process before approval was given. And so I just want members to understand that there is a whole plethora of conditions that were put in place for the safety and security of all residents and all stakeholders in the community.
Thank you. Okay. Let's prepare to vote on it. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We'll now move forward to item seven. I have Cards.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns the L.A. Fire Department's fiscal year annual cost of special service fees adjustment. We are against this. It's 27 associated increases in generating 27.5. We need a consent decree, the way we had at LAPD, because there are practically no black faces, especially black women, at LAPD. They pick a few and bring them out and put them on top. They're selling out the blood of their own people. And that's why we're...
He's not talking about the special fee adjustments.
Feds should not... It's 27 and a half million. No. HollywoodHighlands.org, Fire Department, racist.
Your time is done, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman passes. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Let's now move to item 19. And Mr. Herman on item 19, followed by Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Krikorian, relative to amending the prior council action, September 28th, case entitled Grant Dwyer, D.W.Y.E.R., versus Orgains at the Los Angeles Superior Court, case number PC054285, subject for the approval to accurately reflect the actual settlement amount of only $450,000 as follows. To authorize the city attorney... Mr. Attorney, I'm sure it's not you, Mr. Dion, but it says here, amend prior council action for September 23rd, 2014, to accurately reflect the actual settlement amount that follows. To pay the total amount in settlement of the above entitled matter for the City Attorney Fund 100/59 Account 009770. So you see, Los Angeles, us taxpayers, we continue to pay on the negligence of persons like Mr. Krikorian who agree to pay...
Stay on the item and direct your statement to me.
His name is on the paper here. Motion by Krikorian Parks, but I did say Krikorian. And the settlements go on and on, that we, the Angelenos of Los Angeles, are paying out for the affliction and damages by our council to accept and pay out these amounts at the cost of our council. Yet the taxpayers, all of you, are taking the hit. Just the other day, $600,000 was paid out to attorney fees, Matt Dell, Zuma Dog. And now for a fee of $10? So in conclusion, Mr. Krikorian, do a better job and mitigate the right way instead of taking away from the taxpayers and all of us.
Thank you. Your time is up. Mr. City Attorney for a quick statement.
Just to clarify, on September 28th, counsel adopted our recommendation, our office's recommendation, to settle this matter in the amount of $465,000. That was our error based on our report. The true settlement number is $450,000, which is reflected in this item.
Understand. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Look at the case, Grant Dwyer versus Maradon. It wasn't a litigant. The city wasn't even a litigant. I'm telling you, these settlements pile up. Most of them... This one, I can't go into the details, but most of them are against the police force. And I would like you to tell me I'm full of BS when I say that over the past year, almost $10 million in settlements for misconduct of the LAPD. And if it's not $10 million, destroy my credibility and say, "Mr. Walsh is out of his mind. It's more like $800,000."
He is not talking about this item.
This case also, Grant Dwyer versus Maradon, has to do with the LAPD.
This is a pedestrian versus private vehicle matter.
Indirectly. But I'm saying $10 million over the past year.
Stay on this. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, let's prepare to... Mr. Krikorian?
Just to clarify, members, this is a technical amendment to reduce the amount of the authorized settlement. The settlement arises from litigation that has nothing whatsoever to do with the Los Angeles Police Department. We already approved a settlement. This reduces the amount that's...
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Okay. We're going to move to item one. Is it a Sean Aguilar or Aguilar? Mr. Fuentes?
President, if we could go ahead and delay action on item 1D, as in Dog, for two weeks, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, that'll bring us to what day?
October 29th.
Okay. So without objection, that'll be the order where it relates to 1D. Okay. Let's vote on what the remaining? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Sergeants, if you could clear the council chambers? We're getting ready to go into closed session. If you could clear the council chambers quickly?
Okay. Sergeant, we're good? All right. Madam Clerk, we're gonna proceed with votes on Items 20, 21, and 22.
For Item 22, the recommendation for the case entitled Armando Perez versus the City of Los Angeles, the recommendation is to authorize the city attorney to pay a total of $900,000 in settlement.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Next.
Twelve ayes.
For the case entitled Michael Fernandez versus the City of Los Angeles, recommendation is to pay settlement in the amount of $1,750,000.
Thank you. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And Item 22?
For Item 22, the case entitled Robert Teeter et al. versus the City of Los Angeles, recommendation is to pay settlement in the amount of $500,000.
Okay, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
Okay, so we'll begin our general public comment with Mr. Herman. Again, we will adhere to the one minute. Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Walsh.
To remind you that without consent, I did not allow with unreasonable force for Mr. Paul Coretts to grab my arm the other day, October 7th, 2012, during general public comment, two minutes and three, two hours and three minutes. Assault and battery, penal code is unlawful, Mr. Coretts. Any willful violation and use of force is a violent violation of my rights under general public comment. Persons of a disability, harmful and offensive contact with a person with a disability is intentionally done and illegal, Mr. Coretts, and you are responsible. Again, I'm gonna take a step back and say this: deter future wrongdoings. Deter future wrongdoings. Do you understand that? Because now we're looking at a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, followed by Ms. Hall, Oga Hall. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. That was a whistleblower suit, Number 21. Michael Fernandez, racist retaliation, reporting misconduct. You just gave him 1.7 million dollars. I was told that my 10 million in settlements because of police brutality was very low. I'm hearing it's more like 15 million dollars. Remember, get up there and say I'm lying and tell I'm lying and say how much actually you've paid out. You paid out today about a quarter of, about two and a half million dollars. I want you, everybody, to go to my website, HollywoodHighlands.org, vote no on every single statewide proposition. Don't listen to the arguments. No, 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 no. And look at who we want to be elected. HollywoodHighlands.org and go to Kevin DeLeón's inauguration, which will happen tonight at Disney Hall. Everyone's invited.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, followed by Mr. Martinez and Mr. Akala. Go ahead, Ms. Hall.
Hello. At this time, I just want to make the public aware of what's going on. Visit DavidIg.com, PrisonPlanet.com, JimStoneFreelance.com, NaturalNews.com. You need to be informed of what's going on around the world. We have a lot of things happening. One of the things that is happening to the people is they're having chemtrails. Yesterday, I saw the chemtrails outside. They're having them out there very often. What are they spraying on us? This is geoengineering. You need to know what geoengineering is, what it does to us. They have aluminum barium and you have to know about Ebola. It's coming, so you better inform yourself.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Martinez, Akala, Mr. Barajas. Mr. Barajas?
Hi. I guess, please log on to LaRouche PAC. There will be a report on Ebola. And I guess what I want to say is, we can actually have an international collaboration to get rid of Ebola and the ISIS threat. The problem, I think, that we have is, what is the commitment of each of us to overthrow ourselves from not actually being capable of putting away everything and doing the right thing? I think the incompetence of this administration, and I've already said this for many, 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 many already, I don't have to say it, but I will, but Obama, after being impeached, will release the floodgate once again of the American principle.
Thank you. That concludes general public comment. What's before this body, Madam Clerk?
Counsel has motions, repulsions, and referrals.
They are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements? I don't see announcements. Everybody, please rise. Mr. Buscayeno.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Thelma Gatlin, the daughter of Will. And Luella Johnson passed away on October 2nd, the age of 90. She was born in Louisiana on July 15th, 1924, and was a longtime resident of San Pedro. She is survived by her children, Joe Gatlin, Janetta Gatlin-Brown, and John Gatlin Jr. Visitation was held at Green Hills on Tuesday, the 7th of October, and funeral services were held on the following day, October 8th at Green Hills. May Thelma Gatlin rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any? Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Pensola Curry-Hall, who passed away October 11th, 2014. She was born September 14th, 1913, to Henry Curly and Willie Mae Powers. She later married James Hall and through that union had one daughter, Carolyn. Her husband preceded her in death. Pensola lived and worked in Stamford, Connecticut, prior to moving to Los Angeles in 1951. She was an excellent cook, working for many years as a baker. She enjoyed making cakes, pies, and cookies. She also was very concerned with health, food, vitamins, and eating healthy. Funeral service to be held Saturday, October 18th, 11:00 a.m. at Harrison Ross Marquary, 4601 Crenshaw Boulevard. She's survived by her sister, her daughter, and a host of family members.
Are there any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.